How involved the, the construction on projects are, that can be about 10% of the total project cost. Um, but the good news with this is that it's pretty, uh, you know, it's a pretty good likely especially if you design, you know, projects that, uh, really fit with the complete streets guidelines and their mission. And we can talk, I'll talk a little bit more about that later, but so, you know, 81% of towns that have applied have received funds to implement a project in their community. Um, and if you can go to the next slide. Uh, so this is, this is the sort of like bread and butter of what a plan looks like. It's not, uh, it's a kind of a no frills plan. It's just a Excel spreadsheet. Um, and what they want is for you to kind of outline, you know, the details of each of the projects, outline the geography of those projects. What are the, what are the elements that are included? Um, and then I can help you with some of the coding of the elements and with doing cost estimates for that. Um, and then once you get to that tier three piece of this, you would work with your highway department. Um, they're the ones who ultimately can do the application to apply for these projects. Um, you would choose, you know, a handful of projects that are, you know, a little bit under or a little bit over. If the town wants to put in some funds, the $400,000 mark, um, and apply for those projects. And then Mast D O T will fund all or some of the projects that, uh, you put in for. And if you can go to the next slide. So where we are right now, what we've been doing for the past two or three weeks is working on a comprehensive collection of your current, um, pedestrian infrastructure. So we actually go out into town. Um, and we take, we collect information about the, the condition of your sidewalks, your ramps, your cross, your crosswalks and any obstructions, um, that would make it so, you know, and walking or getting around, uh, something like that. Um, and then we also collect a number of other pieces of data that are readily available. Information about, you know, what roads are eligible for complete streets, the locations of schools, bike trails, things like that. Um, you can click on to the next slide, please. Uh, so this is an, uh, well, I can't show you because I can't share my page, but I would really recommend if you're interested, uh, taking a look at this. This is C M R P C's asset management system. Um, and it's basically an interactive dashboard. It works a lot like how Google Maps works. Um, and this is where we store all the geographic data that we collect. Um, when we, when we actually go out and do the assessment in town. Um, so you can go into this, the link is right below. Um, it says, find it here. Um, and you can look at the sidewalks. Um, you can click on them, see a photo, see the condition. Um, and it'll, it'll kind of give you an idea of just like where you're at as a town. Um, in terms of the condition of the existing, uh, pedestrian network and how connected it is. Um, you know, like thinking about those key locations where people move between. Um, and is there opportunities to better connect those in terms of the pedestrian network? Uh, if you can click on to the next slide. So this is looking at what roads are actually eligible for this program. Uh, so on this map, the blue roads are town, town owned, and they're the ones that are eligible for complete streets projects. Unfortunately, one, uh, route 131 and 197 are not eligible, but one kind of, uh, cool element is that the end of route 12 there, uh, right crossing over the border from Webster to Dudley, uh, is indeed eligible, it looks like. So that might be something to think about. Um, I know you guys just finished up your corridor study, um, between Webster and Dudley. So, um, you know, that's an opportunity to bring in some of those elements. If you can click to the next one. Sorry if you don't mind clicking on to the next slide. Thanks. Uh, so this is looking at what actually, you know, what actually does this program fund in terms of projects? Um, so that slide before was basically the codes of the different types of projects that are eligible for this. Um, but you know, that's a lot of information. So I kind of pulled out some examples from other towns that have applied and got funded through the complete streets program of project elements that were more common. Um, and the way you can kind of think about this is like the building blocks of complete streets projects. Um, so you know, those categories, those four categories, the pedestrian facilities, transit facilities, safety, um, and, um, transit, those are kind of the, the way that, you know, complete streets wants you to think about all of these different uses of a street. Um, and then pulling different elements of those together into a single project. Um, so for pedestrian facilities, you know, you can think about improving sidewalks, filling in sidewalk gaps. Like in Littleton, they built a sidewalk here. Um, you know, you can think about pedestrian bump outs. You often see those in front of schools or in commercial areas. Um, and it kind of creates a little bit more visibility for the pedestrian waiting to cross. And also a shorter, safer distance for them to cross, um, pedestrian refuges, uh, pedestrian refuge. Um, I'm sure you've seen those as well. It's sort of just creating a safe space for a pedestrian. Um, if there's a long crossing distance. Um, you know, signs and lights, um, that help cars be, be more aware of pedestrians. So those are the kind of pedestrian related building blocks of these projects. And if you can go to the next one. So the next sort of set of building block is the bicycle facilities. Um, so you know, the first example is a framing him, they, a multi-use path, um, or, or bike trail. Um, you know, you can do bike racks, bike lanes along the road. Um, wayfinding signs, those kind of elements are, you know, what would be considered to be in, in the realm of bike facilities. And if you can click on to the next one. Uh, so this is just sharing some of the data about, uh, the bike infrastructure in Dudley. Um, so this is data I got from Mass G I S that shows, uh, existing trails in purple, proposed trails in red and potential trails in yellow. Um, so the same way that you can think about your pedestrian network, um, and where there could be better connections there to help people move across the, the city or the town. Um, this is a way to kind of think about how can your bike network, you know, helping people move between those key locations. And if you don't mind clicking on to the next slide.
I think that's it.
Oh, I think there's a couple, there should be a couple more.
There we go.
Okay, cool. Um, yeah, I think I might've just frozen up. Um, so for transit facilities, that might be a less to, you know, emphasis in, in Dudley, but you guys do, uh, and you might have a little bit more local knowledge about this, but you do have the, the Webster Dudley Southbridge shuttle. Um, and it, you know, that's something to think about in terms of, you know, with complete streets, really making a good faith effort to think about all of those different, um, types of transit in a town and types of users of the road in a town will make your projects more competitive. So thinking about how do, you know, sidewalks tie into, um, transit facilities and things like that. Um, so it's just something to keep in the back of your mind, um, through this process. And if you don't mind clicking on to the next slide. And then the last of those four categories is, um, traffic and safety. So, you know, that's really looking at how can you make the roads themselves safer? You know, does that mean adding a lane, a turning lane? It's like speed bumps, or you can see in Cambridge here, they did a raised intersection. Um, and, and you know, it's really just thinking about what are those, um, hazardous areas or intersections? And how can we think about, you know, small ways to, you know, re, reconstruct them or add some, um, you know, warning signs or, or signals that will make them, you know, mitigate, mitigate some of that, um, that hazard. Uh, if you can click on to. Uh, and just in terms of competitiveness, you know, like I've said throughout this, not every project has to have one of each of these categories. Um, but I think just making a good faith effort to, for each project, think about, well, what is the role of bikes here? What is the role of pedestrians here? Um, you know, even if that means, you know, on a road where you really don't have the, the ability to put a bike lane in, just thinking about, you know, widening the shoulder, um, or something really simple like that, you know, making that good faith effort to think about all the users of a road, um, will really contribute to, you know, that project. Um, seen as competitive when you eventually go to apply for a tier three. Um, and if you click on to the next slide. Uh, and the other piece is, is just thinking about, uh, safe routes to school and safe routes for seniors. Uh, Mast U T is increasingly looking for these kind of, this kind of emphasis. Um, and it seems like it also, you know, is potentially something that could work well in Dudley. Um, 94% of the projects they funded have had a safe routes to school component and 62% to have, have had a safe routes for seniors component. Um, so really, you know, just thinking about what are those key corridors for, for, uh, students? And what are those key corridors for, uh, older adults as well? And I think the, you can click on to the last slide, maybe second to last. All right. Yeah. So I hope that this has, this presentation has given you kind of an idea of what are the project elements? What are the building blocks that this program will fund? Um, and what, and you know, ultimately you guys are the, the best experts about your town. You know, what are those areas that are really hazardous that, you know, feel unsafe when you're driving or you're walking or your kids are walking to school? Um, you know, we've certainly, leading up to this process, talked about a number of different locations that have some economic value or that have some, you know, uh, traffic problems. Um, and then the next meeting will hopefully be a chance to really look at each of those project ideas and dive in and kind of come up with, um, solutions and put those building blocks together to create the projects that will go into your plan. Uh, so I think on the next page, all I have is just a couple of, um, you know, resources, if you're interested in looking more, um, into some of the, the information about what, you know, other towns have done. In Massachusetts, but right now I think we have some time for questions. Am I correct? And, uh, Ken and I both can kind of try to field as many questions as, um, you guys have.
All right. And we see if there are any questions from the public. Uh, members of the board, questions?
Yeah, I just want to get a clarification about, uh, non-eligible road. So route 197, you know, in our town, that's pretty much all of West Main Street. It's a major route. So does that mean that we can't do anything as far as, um, this plan goes on that, that, that whole section?
So there's two things. So in terms of applying for complete streets funds for projects that are directly on that road, no, unfortunately it's not eligible to apply for funds. Um, one thing that we do recommend to towns and that there's some utility in doing is, uh, still, you know, if there's projects you want to do on those roads, put them in. Uh, because one, it, it's a chance to kind of look at your whole sidewalk network more holistically. Um, and two, it's an opportunity, you know, to potentially have a bargaining chip when Mast D O D comes in and does, you know, road repairs and things like that. Um, you know, say you want to add a bike lane, right? And Mast D O T is coming to do repaving. You know, you can say, hey, this is in our Mast D O T approved complete streets plan. You know, we'd really like for this to be part of your, the work that you do. Um, so that's, that's one utility of that. Um, the other kind of workaround is to focus on the roads adjacent. Um, so you know, you can do a ramp, you know, you can do a ramp or something at the road adjacent to that road. Um, but yeah, unfortunately, those roads themselves are not eligible. Um, except for, as I said, that one little, that one little spot where route 12, I believe, has not yet ended, um, coming in from Webster. So that could also be, you know, a place to look at that intersection and see what kinds of projects you'd like to do there.
Okay, thank you.
Question, uh, again, I noticed that in our streets, street sidewalk inventory, we've had something called the goat path. Point three percent. Uh, where is that? And how is that defined?
Yeah. So we actually recently changed our, um, ranking system. We used to use that, uh, as sort of what we ranked the sidewalks that were the most pattered up. So that probably we, there was a couple of roads that we did, that we collected data on, um, for the, the Massachusetts tip program eligibility that are also in that system. So that's probably from back then, but basically a goat path is probably a somewhat derogatory way of saying that the sidewalk is really, 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 um, smashed up. And, you know, doesn't really look much like a sidewalk anymore.
Not even safe for the goats. If I may, where would this presentation be available? Uh, you went through the slides, but obviously there was a lot of information there and we only got a brief look at most of it. Uh, is it available online? Can you send it to Bill and he forward it to us? Is it some mechanism there?
Yes, I, I did send it to Bill and he can send it on to you, um, or I'm happy to, uh, if, you know, Bill wants to, um, put together an email, I'm happy to, uh, forward it on to everyone from there.
I believe I, I did forward it already to your new county mail accounts. Uh huh. So you should look there, but I'll also, uh, put it on the website so that, uh, anybody else can have a chance to look at it.
Oh, but another reason for me to get in that account.
And you mentioned a number of projects. These are projects that have already been identified as I understood that. Is that correct?
So there hasn't been any projects identified. We have at some preliminary meetings, leading up to this, talked about some of those key locations. Um, because I wanted to keep that in mind as I went out and collected data. Um, so, you know, we talked about some of the mills, uh, we talked about, you know, the areas around the high school and the middle school. Um, that area, that little piece of route 12.
But you say, when you say, excuse me, when you say we, we, we're talking about within your organization, or are you talking about something that involves town officials or town government?
Uh, uh, really just, you know, in some of the emails leading up when we were planning our, our data process of, um, you know, where, where are we going to go out? You know, what are those key places that we should look when we're collecting data?
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. Very informative. And, uh, before we go any further, a little housekeeping issue here, I should have mentioned that we also have with us this evening, our acting town planner, Bill Scanlon, who's also, uh, the administrative genie that keeps this thing working somehow. And, uh, along with him, we act to have our acting clerk, Michelle Jarvis. Critical pieces of the puzzle and, uh, the folks that keep us going. So we certainly don't want to omit them or neglect them. Uh, is there anything further, Gemma, from your end?
Nothing further from my end. Feel free to, uh, my email is also in that PowerPoint. Um, if anybody has any additional questions, um, and hopefully we'll be able to set up a, a next meeting to, you know, start to pin down what the projects you'd like to put into that plan are.
Well, thank you very much. We definitely appreciate your effort and look forward to making some progress on some of these issues. Thank you again.
Thank you, Gemma and Eden for coming. Appreciate it.
And Ian, thank you as well.
Oh, no, this is Gemma's pro, this is Gemma's, uh, project. So I'm just here on a supporting role. Um, and I just want to sort of, you know, briefly mention real quick as sort of a parting words. I know that the town does, is working on a community development block grant infrastructure plan in the, um, sort of neighborhoods surrounding the town, the municipal complex and the, um, that mill that's right there on route 12. And there is a way for, there is going to be a way for us to sort of combine efforts and sort of, you know, use some of the data collected on that end of the infrastructure from that project. As, and including that in when we look at sort of the overall network of streets, especially in sort of the, um, eastern block, you know, that the very heavily dense eastern sort of block of Dudley. And, um, kind of in thinking of that as sort of some other projects that we might be able to include on the, um, complete streets plan. Um, since those are roads that are going to be town owned and therefore eligible. So just, you know, just something to keep in mind that we are aware of the various work that's happening in Dudley, um, of infrastructure planning that, um, is being done within C R, C M R P C. And that's not lost on us to, in order to reach out to colleagues and, you know, combine efforts. So we're not really reinventing the wheel every time that we go out to the town.
Thank you, Ian.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. If you may, we can move on perhaps to item number four on the agenda. Uh, I believe joining us this evening, we have Robert and Lynn Doherty. Regarding the zoning amendments will allow cultivation of marijuana on a Corbin, Corbin Road location. Are they with us?
Yes, we're here.
All righty. Uh, I believe the, uh, table or the, uh, you are the presenters at this point.
Yes. They're with us. This is our first time we do something like this. So.
Well, most of us are too much ahead of you on that one, frankly.
Okay. Um, I actually did a little, um, introductory statement, just to give you an idea of who we are and what it is that we're, we're looking to do. So again, we're Lynn and Robert Doherty. We own, uh, Angel Farms on 175 Corbin Road, and we're proposing to operate a licensed tier seven outdoor cannabis grow on a private 60,000 square foot section of our farm. We purchased the 55 acre former dairy farm in April of 2018. We are currently in talks with a licensed Massachusetts adult use marijuana facility. Would like to enter into a long-term agreement with us to purchase all cannabis grown by Angel Farms for their facility. We would grow high quality sun grown cannabis exclusively for them. Um, if, if successful, Angel Farms would be the sixth licensed outdoor marijuana cultivation farm in Massachusetts. Robert here has been licensed by the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, or M D R, for the past two growing seasons. We've had two successful hemp grows, um, one in 2019 and one in 2020 on the property without issue. Um, and we have pictures if Bill could pull those up of the actual field.
Yeah, hold on a sec.
Okay.
There.
Okay. Um, so that's what it looked like after we turned it over. And then I think if you scroll, there should be more. Yep. Those are the actual plants, um, that we put in. And as you can see, there's quite a bit of space between those plants. Those plants are actually very large. Um, they're roughly, I don't know, seven to eight feet tall. Um, and essentially one thing that you, you should do when you plant outdoors like that, and which is why it requires a large canopy. You can't use any kind of chemicals on your plants. You can't use, um, anything to take care of mold or, or mildew for the most part. And these plants, like any other garden plants, are susceptible to something like that. So the best way to manage that or to avoid it altogether is to allow for a very large spacing around all your plants. So you won't get a lot of plants, but what you will get is healthy, high-quality plants. So that's why you see the, the distance between the plants, but that's, that's the field that we would be planting in. If we were to do the, the actual cannabis and you can scroll, I think there might be one or two more pictures, Bill. That's the, the field again with the, um, it's kind of hard to judge the size of the plants because of the trees, but, and then this is actually what they look like in the very beginning. They start out as little tiny plants and they're, you know, they look like they're in a big wasteland, but it's just allowing them space to grow. So this past October, we hosted a tour of our farm and our hemp grow for Senator Ryan Fatman and his aide, who were viewing our 2020 hemp crop. Who after viewing our 2020 hemp crop was instrumental in passing the budget amendment S four dash phone six six. Massachusetts hemp industry survived and thrived, Bill. So we were kind of the poster child, uh, for that bill. Our plan is to transform a once thriving former dairy farm, which has been vacant since the early 1980s, into a viable or can't organically certified farm. The cannabis would be grown specifically for the aforementioned licensed marijuana facility in Massachusetts. And there would be no processing, no manufacturing and no retail sales of cannabis on our farm. We're farmers. That's it. Um, our vision is to preserve the rural character of Corbin Road by maintaining the 55 acre parcel as a productive and beautiful working farm. The income generated from the marijuana cultivation will help support our ability to grow other organically certified crops while helping us to build our farm. We plan to take steps to ensure that this property is kept a farm in perpetuity. There's a massive well on the property and we are currently installing irrigation to our fields. We will not require any natural resources from the town. Our water is pristine and we will not use any chemicals on our crops or anywhere on the farm that could potentially contaminate our water. We currently generate our own power via roof mounted solar panels on our residence. We plan to add roof mounted solar panels to our barn once constructed in order to maintain a net zero footprint for the farm. Now this, um, picture that Bill just pulled up, this actually shows 175 Corbin Road. But if you notice the field that's highlighted in blue, that's the field that we planted last year and this year, uh, this past year. And, um, that's the area where that particular grow would take place if we grow cannabis. And if you could move it over, I don't know if you can move it over a little bit to the left, Bill, so that we can see the other side of this, um, this field.
Uh, no, as far as it goes.
That's as far as it goes. Okay. Oh yeah. Cause we have the, the pictures. Well, essentially it, it, I, I wanted to show you that it's really, um, a very private field. You can't see it from the road. It, it's got trees and, and it, I don't know. What would you say, Robert? Maybe another? 200 to 300 feet before you end up back out to Corbin Road on that end. So it's very private. Um, let's see. Okay. So again, we, we're gonna put the, the solar panels on the barn once that's constructed. So we can have a net zero footprint for the farm and we believe in Dudley's green community principles. I mean, we're all about preserving, you know, the resources of the land as well as the town. Um, security for the, the grow would be mandated by the Cannabis Control Commission. And we will implement any and all security, uh, measures that they deem necessary. We expect that security fence, lighting, security cameras and alarms will be an integral part of that security. Police details would not be required because this is a farm. Traffic would be minimal and essentially limited to employees only. The grow will not be visible from the road, nor will it be open to the public. We expect to create several full-time jobs as well. And we would also, um, try to hire on seasonal help as needed. That would generally be for the planting season and the harvest season. Um, other than that, it, the plants just grow. Let's see. We expect, uh, sorry.
Oh, the caffeine is small.
The revenue generated from the wholesale cannabis grow will enhance the tax base and contribute to the economic growth of the town. We have submitted a map of our property with the field and we've already looked at that. Um, that we've been growing in, which was highlighted in blue. That's where we want to grow the actual cannabis. The field is very fertile and very private. Included our pictures of our 2019 grow, which you already saw, we also had included, I'm, I'm sorry, the 2020 grow. We also included pictures of 2019 grow, but that was on a much smaller scale. That was like, I think we had 830 plants the first year and last year we grew just over 2,000 plants. Um, we believe that allowing us to cultivate the cannabis outdoors on our farm will have a positive impact on the town. It would preserve a beautiful tract of land, which was once a productive farm and transform it into a productive farm once again. It would create new jobs while generating tax revenue in the form of the community host agreement. We do not anticipate any negative impact to the town. The only thing that will actually change from what we've done the last two years, um, is the fact that, uh, the town will gain something from it. Angel Farms is going to be responsible for implementing any security pieces directed by the, uh, C C C. The town will stand to gain anywhere between 150 to $200,000 in revenue per year for us essentially growing the same crops that we've grown the past two years. The only difference is going to be the level of the THC that the plants contain. So it's going to go from less than point three percent T, total THC to greater than point three percent total THC. That's the only one. That's the only one qualifying difference in licensure requirements between hemp and cannabis. We thank you for allowing us to present this, and we would be open to any guidance or help that you can give us.
Thank you.
As how to go about this.
Well, let's first of all, open it up perhaps to questions. Do we have any questions from the public? Uh, none. Okay. Board members, do you have any questions for the Dohartys?
My first question would be, what was your your main, what was the main factor that made you decide to move from hemp production to marijuana production?
We lost our crop two years in a row.
And is that because the THC level was too high?
Yeah.
Yep. The first year, we lost the entire crop. This last, this past year, we were able to, out of five strains, one strain passed. And the other four strains ranged from 0.33% to 0.5. And that's after working from April through, we didn't burn it until November. Every day was a Monday. We never had a day off. We worked on that farm sometimes 14 hours a day, a couple of times, mostly 12. And
And we have to find a way out of this here, because we want to be farmers, and it's the upcoming thing.
And we're and we're trying to, I mean, we bought this farm, we're retired, we are both retired. We bought this farm with the intention that we were going to farm it, and we had no idea what we were going to farm when we bought it. But we knew we wanted to keep it a farm, because I don't know if you've seen this place, that farm on Corbin Road is breathtaking.
If I may just interject here for a second, the issue before the board is that marijuana cultivation is not allowed with this farmer located. It's only allowed in industrial 130 and in the middle overlay district. So in order for the Dohartys to engage in this operation, they need some kind of a zoning change. So that could either be rezoning this property to industrial 130, which really doesn't make any sense, because it's a very rural area. Or you could allow cultivation of marijuana in the residential 87 district, which would then allow not only the Dohartys, but anybody else in that district to engage in this kind of use, or to create a special district, an overlay district of some sort, which would allow marijuana cultivation within it, and then rezone that property and any others that might come forward into the overlay district with its own set of regulations that would piggyback onto the town's existing marijuana bylaw. So I think the Dohartys are here tonight to seek the board's guidance in terms of how they should proceed from the, you know, from here, in order to make this an allowable use in town, so that they could then go through the CCC licensing process and adhere to all the standards that the state has.
Board members, any comments?
My my comment would be, I would agree with the town planner. I think an overlay district for this type of situation would be good. The other benefit to it was, would be that in the future, if other farms came forward and said that they wanted to do the same thing, they could just be added into the overlay districts.
If I may, I do think that changing it to industrial 130 is a real reach. It doesn't seem appropriate in any way, shape, or form, given the location and the the character of the neighborhood. I wondered if they had any input or any comments from the neighbors of the Butters in regards to the crop that they're growing or the effort that they're making?
We haven't heard a peep from our neighbors.
And they're all aware of what it is that is
Everyone knows that we're growing hemp over there. We haven't had any issues whatsoever.
Bill will keep me on the straight and narrow with this, I'm sure. We've had a a big facility authorized in the town of Dudley for both grow, retail, and distribution. And I know that the selectmen were very much involved in that process. I'm not sure that there's anything here for us to act on. I think somehow the selectmen might need to be at least apprised of this situation. And I'm not sure if this isn't really a zoning board of appeals issue. How is the planning board to function in regards to, what is our function in regards to an overlay district? Did we propose that? And how was the the process initiated and how is it completed?
Well, you know, planning board, of course, is the gatekeeper of the zoning bylaw and the zoning map. So any zoning amendments have to go through the planning board. The selectmen typically weigh in on those matters, but it's really up to the planning board to receive petitions for zoning amendments, make a recommendation to town meeting, and and then carry it to town meeting with either a positive or negative recommendation. So I think at this point, it's up to the the Dohartys to to come up with the specific amendment that they are looking for. But I think, you know, what they want from the board is sort of a green light, whether they should go ahead and proceed in some fashion. Or if the planning board is definitely opposed to it, you know, that might sort of shut the door on what they're trying to do.
Bill, I do also have the option of going directly to the town meeting, do they not?
Well, the way I see it working is that the, I think the petitioner would would prepare the zoning article. And then all zoning articles are referred to the planning board for a public hearing and a recommendation, and then it goes to town meeting. So since this is particularly a benefit to this property owner, I'm not sure the planning board itself would be the sponsor of the article, so I think it would fall to the to the Dohartys to prepare and sponsor the article and have a citizen's petition submitted to town meeting.
Would we be, this would, I assume at some point there would be a public hearing on this issue?
This is public hearing for all zoning amendments.
All right, so then the the step then that is before us is to either advance this issue with request to them for some sort of a formal documentation or document that we could present to the selectmen or put into the administrative process. Is that the next step then? Or possible next step?
You know, I think of the the possible routes that we've talked about, the overlay district probably makes the most sense. So, you know, I'd be willing to work with the Dohartys on, in terms of putting such an article together, but it'd be up to them to to be the actual sponsor and do whatever was necessary in order to gain the support for that article at town meeting. But it would have to come to the planning board at some point for a public hearing. And then you would have to make a recommendation, either pro or con, to town meeting.
All right, so from what I gather, then this is informational, at this point, there is nothing for us to act on it or to vote on on
Correct.
motionable item at this point.
Correct.
Okay. Any further questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. I wanted to know, you happened to mention that, I believe you said there were six other outdoor grow commute facilities in the state of Massachusetts. Do you happen to know the towns offhand?
Five, five others.
Five others.
Plainfield, Sheffield, Barry, I believe. Gosh, I I should have wrote them down, I apologize. But we would, we would be the, actually, the six.
Okay.
And again, I can't speak for any of the other, I believe they are strictly, though, outdoor grows. I don't think they do any processing either. Our product wouldn't even stay in Dudley, but it would stay in Massachusetts. Any cannabis products have to be produced, processed, and sold to Massachusetts.
If if this were to work out in your favor, so you were able to go forward with this project, would that then entail you entering into one of these community host agreements with the town of Dudley?
I believe it would.
Yes, it would.
Okay. All right. So obviously, that would mean more revenue for the town, which I know town likes that.
I think it would be a win-win, to be honest with you, because
We are building a farm, so we are need money to build our barn, to the equipment, you know. We're coming from a farm, but
Yeah, we're not, we're not taking the easy route, you know, we're lit, we're retired. And instead of going someplace warm, we're trying to build a farm. We just, it was a dream that we had to do in retirement. Couldn't do it where we came from in Rhode Island, because they scared us off with a massive power plant. So that's what precipitated this, you know.
One other thing to note is that the state regulations allow up to 100,000 square feet of canopy grow space for marijuana cultivation, but the town marijuana bylaw limits cultivation, outdoor cultivation to a Tier 7 license, which is up to 60,000 square feet. So they would not be allowed to grow the maximum amount under state law due to the restriction in the town bylaw.
That Tier 7 is what they're asking for, at least.
Yes.
Billy, you prepared to work with them in terms of putting something together?
Yes, if given the, you know, if that's okay with the board, I'd be happy to do that.
So the the other properties that abut your property, do you have a feel for, are those also large, large tracts? Are there any smaller lots near you?
We have 22 of Butters.
Okay. Of those 22 of Butters, do you know if any of them are under five acres?
I believe most of them are under five acres. The two that are not, Gacksky and Farmer Timms, and they are both APR, so they are not eligible.
And I think they were all pieces of that farm that got broken off, where people will have more money in their pocket. Maybe any who got rid of the lot.
But I I thought I read somewhere that that farms that were in in protection could still cultivate hemp.
They can cultivate hemp, but they cannot cultivate cannabis. And the reason they can't cultivate cannabis is because the federal government has not recognized that cannabis is, what I'm looking for. It hasn't been decriminalized, in other words, across the country yet. Massachusetts has decriminalized it, a lot of states have, but the entire country has not yet federally. So anything that's under like the agricultural preservation restriction, they are not eligible to grow cannabis. They can grow hemp.
The reason why I was asking about the sizes of the properties near you was because since it's, if it was a residential, if it was an overlay district for the res 87 area, res 87 is what minimum two-acre lot size. So you're going to have some properties there and
Oh, I see where you're going with this.
I'm kind of worried about like somebody with two acres saying, hey, you know, let's
It wouldn't happen. Can I tell you why?
I'm guessing you're going to tell me the cost of the security and putting the fence up and all that.
Not even just that. The whole process is so financially straining, I guess is a good word.
Okay.
However, for it to be worthwhile, you would have to have not only the resources to put it together, which, you know, we can, we can scrape that together, that's okay. But at the same time, you've got to have a buyer, and no marijuana facility is going to buy dribs and drabs of cannabis. They need quantity. They will not even get involved with you unless you can provide quantity. And then there has to be quality as well.
So then the other issue I'm thinking about here is if you're going to do an overlay, and if the overlay was to encompass and only really only benefit your farm, I think, Bill, could we get into a problem with spot zoning then?
Yeah, I don't think that would be the case either, because I do know when we were, see, we used to go to the agricultural meetings when we first came to town, and there were other farms that were looking at it as well. But again, it wasn't, things have happened so much since we first started looking into it two years ago, because now we've already got other states coming on board that are doing the decriminalization of the cannabis. And Massachusetts has put pieces in place that's allowing for the marijuana facilities to sell adult-use marijuana, which before was strictly medicinal. Okay, like the dispensaries. So there's a need for it. There's going to be a huge demand for it. And not everyone can produce or has the area to produce. The um and and think about it, you know how much water it takes for for something like that? We we happen to be fortunate that we have a massive well on our property. That's just, that was just a lark. But we were put in the process of putting our irrigation in now for all of our fields, and that field would be included in there. So we have, we have plenty of water. We're not going to need anybody's resources, but we'll be able to generate income, not only for ourselves, but for the town, and that's going to help us also develop the farm in other areas, because I also want to do 100% organic vegetables, fruit. I planted like 42 blueberry bushes. We're serious about this. We want this to be a very active, beautiful farm.
Richard, I think, you know, we have other items on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's time to to
I guess I'm not sure, again, Bill, it doesn't look like there's anything actionable here, although I understand that you're willing to go ahead and see if we can take this to the next step, and then perhaps there would be something there for us to vote on or actually act on. Is that the way you see it?
Sure, I'm happy to work with them, and we'll come back to the board with a more definitive plan.
All right, Mr. and Mrs. Doherty, we appreciate your spending time on this this evening, and I think we've learned a little bit. Hopefully, things will work out for you and for the town.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening. And going forward, our fifth item on the agenda is a request for administrative change for SEP Solar. Stephen Christie, I see Mr. Christie's been with us for some time now, has notified the planning board that due to increased solar panel efficiencies, the solar farm will have a capacity of 5.0 megawatts, which is greater than the 4.4 megawatts stated in the decision. No changes to the solar field are proposed, only a change in the nameplate capacity. Mr. Christie, are you there?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
I just read through that very quickly. I don't, I assume that there may be something else that you'd care to share with us and
Well, there's there's not too much, because I'm just asking for a text change, but what has happened is since December 12, 2018, when we first got the project approved through site plan approval, we were stuck in the national grid study that lasted years. And we are just finally getting to the point where we can get to construction, and we're just dotting i's and crossing t's and noticed, and also relooking at the the solar array we we designed and noticing that we can actually install different panels on the same exact footprint with no change to the site plan whatsoever, and bump the size of the project up from 4.4 to 5 megawatts. When we go for our financing on this project, people will be looking at those small details, and everything needs to line up perfectly. So it's kind of just a little bit of an administrative change to change that from 4.4 to 5 megawatts. It will also help the town in the fact that the pilot agreement negotiated with the town is on a per-megawatt basis, so now the town will get a little more revenue in taxes as well for the project.
All right. Any questions from the public with regards to this issue?
Does the height of the panels change? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, board members, please. Mr. O'Troba.
Yeah, does the height of the panels change?
No.
Okay.
Anyone else? Questions? That's okay, it's my pleasure.
I guess I'm wondering about the procedure of such a thing also, is would we reissue an amended decision? And because I will want to re-record this at the Registry of Deeds.
Bill?
Um, you know, I think we could just take a vote on this item as an administrative change without actually having to reopen the public hearing to perform a formal amendment to the special permit. And then I I would certainly be able to draft a letter, and with the board's approval, go ahead and sign it. And I think that would be sufficient to, you know, to enact the change that Mr. Christie's looking for.
I agree.
Anyone here to make a motion in that regard?
Bill, you want to put that document up again, and then I'll try and make a motion? Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, uh, for administrative purposes, we changed the document from four point four mega watts to five megawatts. This would be the
A motion and is there a second? Motion made, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All right, we'll proceed with the vote. Mr. Wetrova.
Aye.
Mr. LaPage.
Aye.
Mr. Horn.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep. Good night.
Uh, moving ahead, then we have item number six on our agenda for the evening. A request by Randy Waterman, engineer and Robert Ruda, owner. Uh, to modify a condition of the special permit decision to not require the filing and approval of a definitive plan for Legacy Landing. I had been advised that it would be appropriate for me to recuse myself from this, this matter as I am a, and a butter. Probably the most significant a butter, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Ruda might confirm that. I think he's indicating such is the case. So, uh, with that in mind, I will open it to discussion.
Uh, who would like to take over as acting chairman for this portion of the meeting? Steve, uh, Steve, would you be willing to do that as clerk?
Yeah, I guess so. Sure.
Okay.
Hi. Good evening. This is Randy Waterman from WDA Design Group. Uh, we were the engineers and landscape architects for the, uh, open space residential subdivision known as Legacy Landing. And, uh, the reason that we are in front of you tonight is, um, we were notified by, uh, Bill, uh, the town planner regarding a, uh, a condition that's in our special permit. That, uh, there is a section that requires the filing of a definitive subdivision plan. And, uh, so we spoke to him a little bit about after going through the special permit. And based on all of the waivers that were voted on by the board, uh, waivers from the zoning by law and both from the subdivision by law. And that, uh, as recorded, um, they make it extremely difficult to even, uh, figure out how you would do a definitive subdivision on this project now. And they actually would be in conflict with many of the waivers that were granted. And so, uh, we talked to Bill a little bit about an option or, um, an idea to, uh, to clarify the special permit and see if it would be possible through, uh, vote to remove that section. That one paragraph that requires a filing of a definitive plan. So I had drafted a request, uh, to the board to consider this. And essentially, um, I think that's it there. Uh, so, so most of the points I made, I think, um, I, I don't know if everybody has the decision handy or has looked at that recently. But I can explain generally, um, on the, uh, page three of the decision. The first paragraph refers to the sub, or the zoning by law and says that the plan or the applicant would need to file a definitive subdivision plan under section three oh five oh six. Subsection D one D. Um, and basically when you read that section of the zoning by law, it says the purpose of filing a definitive plan is that you will not have more than one building designed or available for use or dwelling purposes on any lots in the subdivision without the consent of the planning board. Um, so that's it right there. At the very top is the, the section that we would like to, um, amend our decision to remove is section of paragraph one. And so they, again, that requires a definitive plan. And it says after that, um, subject to the, the Dudley rules and regulations to the subdivision land which states, and again, no more than one dwelling would be, is designed or available for use on the land. And again, this project is already approved for twenty two units to be built on this single lot. So it really is in conflict, uh, to file a definitive plan now, uh, to show that you can have more than, or no more than one lot when we have twenty two approved. Uh, the, the very last sentence in that second paragraph as well. Uh, it says it is expressly understood that the approval of any different lot on a definitive plan is implied for one residential unit unless otherwise stated. So again, the whole purpose is, as you know, for filing a definitive plan is to create frontage for new building lots. But this project was approved as a single condominium lot. And so we don't need to create any new frontage. Section, uh, so I would, uh, if we can go to uh, paragraph number four, that's, uh, it's not highlighted here, but paragraph number four says roadways within the open space residential development shall forever remain private roads. So again, if they're always gonna be private roads, there would be no, no need to create a definitive subdivision. And in fact, by creating a definitive subdivision, now you would create setbacks from that new right of way line to the twenty two units in the project. So again, that would be in conflict with the way the project was designed and approved. Um, I don't know, Bill, if you have the next page with the waivers copied on here. Right there. Um, so again, when we started to look through this decision, um, you'll note these are the waivers from the zoning by law specifically, and the next section is the subdivision waivers. But under the zoning by laws, these are the waivers that the board has approved waiver to allow frontage less than that required. A condominium development is proposed with no public right of way. So again, that, that, that section of the waiver says no public right of way is needed. The next one says the same thing. So does the third one, uh, the fourth one. The fifth one, three point oh five oh six B waiver to drawing the lot lines. Again, if you drew a definitive plan, typically you put lot lines for all the new lots, but we have one lot. So there's no reason to draw a definitive plan or lot lines. And lot lines again have been waived as a condominium developed with a single lot. Um, so all of those sections kind of are in conflict even trying to file a definitive plan. Uh, the same thing happens down under the subdivision rules and regulations. Um, we already have a waiver to allow more than one building on a lot. So that stated above was the reason why you would file a definitive plan. Um, number three in this, or sorry, the second one from the bottom waiver to allow more than one building on a lot. So we already have those waivers. On the next page, they really just continue the same kind of thing as uh, more waivers that allow one building on a lot. So again, as we started to go through the decision and, and try and figure out how you would even comply with that, uh, paragraph one on the top of page three. Uh, we were kind of confused as how we could do it. And it really seems like it would be, if we tried to even do it, it would be in conflict with all the waivers you've already granted. So that's why we drafted a request to see if the board would consider an amendment to our special permit. Just as you did on the last decision, something that would, uh, not require opening the public hearing, but would allow this, uh, to be clarified in a letter from the board that could also be recorded so that it would be officially on the records at the registry.
Steve, do you want to show the plan? You sent me, uh, one of the sheets. Uh, would that be helpful for you or do you just want to continue the discussion?
Yeah. I, I mean, if you have that plan, if you can put that up.
Sure.
Uh, so again, for the, the board members that were not, uh, involved in the special permit process when we did this with the planning board. Um, the decision was actually, uh, issued back in December of two thousand and eighteen. But, um, this project is a single building lot. And on it, uh, we had designed and got approval for twenty two age restricted houses. Uh, that would all be located on the same single parcel. And we utilize the existing frontage on Airport Road, which is at the top of the plan. And also the existing legal frontage that is on Dudley Road on the bottom of the plan. So again, this is a unique situation in that we were not trying to create new frontage. We didn't need to create new frontage. All of the frontage came from existing public streets. So the way the project was designed was this private roadway that runs through the entire project. And we even have a little break in the middle of it to prevent, uh, vehicles from just passing through the site and using it as a throughway. But the area that is shown yellow, that's a dashed line that is on the plan. And that dash line follows the entire roadway. And that was designed and approved in the drawings as the private um, access easement and utility easement for this project. So again, if we read this verbatim from the, from the decision and tried to change those yellow lines to a solid definitive subdivision roadway, then you can see how we would create setback issues to every single unit in here. And it would really create chaos with the, the layout and the process. So, um, we do not see how it could be any benefit to anyone since this is a private roadway. The conditions re- require that the roadway stays private forever. Um, so again, it, it doesn't seem to benefit, uh, the project or the town in any way. And it would cause, I, I believe pretty much chaos with the layout of the plan. So that's why we have requested an amendment to eliminate that from this decision if possible.
Well, Bill, with, with the exception of possibly Guy, none of the board members here this evening were on the board at the time that this went through. So, um, I really wish Dan was here. So, uh, Bill, can you give, give me some guidance? What, what do we, what is your recommendation?
Well, I think, y- you know, a condominium is certainly a different entity than a subdivision plan. And the fact that, uh, there was one lot involved here and the road will continue to remain a, a private way. I think the main concern of the board is to make sure that the, the roadway, even though it will be private, is still built to subdivision standards. And I think the plan that was submitted will, would do that. So I guess I'm not seeing any particular reason to make the applicant go through, uh, you know, subdivision definitive plan process. Uh, doesn't seem to be anything to gain from that since the special permit, I think, was very thorough and, and granted a lot of waivers already, uh, you know, from the subdivision regs. So going through the definitive plan, again, I think it'd be asking for the same waivers and getting the same end result. So I'm not sure that it really benefits anybody by making the applicant go through the definitive plan. Um, because it really won't change anything, I don't think.
So are we looking for a board member to make a motion to waive the requirement for a definitive plan for this project? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, I think we're looking to remove that condition that they submit a definitive plan, which is in the special permit decision.
Okay, so it's not, it's not really a waiver. It's, we're just asking.
That they, yes, that, that condition be modified.
Okay, so at, at this time, I would, uh, anybody want to make that?
I do have, if you don't mind, one or two other things that I noticed in the decision that I'd like to get Randy's, uh, feedback on before we actually go to the vote.
If you'll Okay.
Wait a second, I'll pull that back up. So I highlighted two other sections when I read the decision that sort of uh, I thought we needed to address. Uh, these are conditions seven and eight. Uh, condition seven says that the applicant shall preserve any and all mature, healthy trees. Accordingly, the applicant may in the construction of the roadway vary the location of the travel way within the roadway right of way in order to preserve said trees. It says such variation shall be shown in the definitive plan. And a complete tree planting and landscaping plan shall be shown on the definitive plan. So if we're not going to require the definitive plan, I'd like, I'd still like to get this planting plan before the board so that we can, you know, implement this condition that the, that the trees be preserved. And then condition eight says that, um, uh, public will be able to use a walking trail on the site. Gravel service parking area containing two spaces for users of this trail should, and over for parking by visitors will be shown on the definitive plan. So again, I'd like to see a separate plan, uh, which implements this condition since we'll not, we will not be acting on a definitive plan. Randy, do you have any? Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, di- did you, um, uh, go through the landscape plan that we submitted with the special permit that was in the set?
No, I, I figured that that plan had been submitted already and that this condition was, was still deemed necessary for the definitive plan stage. So, uh, I'm not sure, you know, what to do about it at this point.
Okay, well, we did, yeah, we did provide a landscape plan and also we do show those two parking spaces down in the lower end of the roadway on the plan. So I believe that we have, um, provided and accommodated those two conditions. And I think again, the language that is confusing is definitive plan. It seems like, um, if the board was willing to vote to amend the decision to remove paragraph one, they could also clarify that the conditions of seven and eight will still be required and be subject to um, the special permit. And since this is being recorded as part of the special permit, then we would be, you know, confirming that these items, like I say, they, they've been provided. But they're not on a definitive plan. They're on a special permit set of plans.
Yeah, and I, I think that works for me if that's okay with the board.
Does your, does your, um, landscape plan, um, already provide, um, the, uh, suitable buffer between lots sixty five and sixty seven?
Yeah.
That's, that's shown on that plan already?
Yep.
Okay.
Guy, you were there at the time. Do you have any, any other insight you'd like to offer?
Yeah, I think I can, I, you know, just, uh, as Steve said, I think I am, maybe, I don't know if Dan was on the, uh, if he was on the board at the time of this one coming forward or not, but, um, I think honestly, the reason why we're in this situation is that this is the first, if you don't know, this is the first open space residential subdivision that was approved in the town of Dudley. So, um, being the first, uh, we're, we're probably gonna have a little bit of growing pains like this. Um, in that nobody ever picked up on the fact that we were asking for a definitive plan when you really maybe don't even need one for a project such as this because of, you know, as he just stated, all the, all the units are built on one lot versus multiple lots. Um, there's no really, there's no setbacks. Your frontage is already existing on two different roads. Um, so I think this is, I, I would just chalk this up to like, you know, uh, growing pains on the first project that's, that's been done this way.
Okay, good. Any of the other board members have any more questions? Guy, do you want to make that motion since you kind of have a, a pretty good handle on?
Yeah, if you could, if you could put that, um, um, paperwork back up there.
Sure, the decision.
I could take a look at it.
Sure. This is condition one, I think.
So. So basically we would be, so this is a, this is on the special permit, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we would, we, I would be making a motion to modify, um, the special permit for Legacy Landing. Um, this is when it's listed here, number one, what is this? This, this is a
These are, these are conditions.
Okay, so under condition number one, we would like to remove the, remove the condition of approval. Um, number one, that the applicant has to submit a definitive plan for this project. And instead we would use the landscape plan. And what are you calling the plan where you show the roadway and the, uh, lot or the unit locations?
Uh, that's the layout materials plan.
Okay, so the layout materials plan and the landscape plan would be used in it basically instead of the, instead of providing a definitive plan. That's hard. I know I didn't really do a good job in making that into a
We can clean that up. And that would also include those other two conditions that, uh, they would not be required on a definitive plan. They would not be required on a definitive plan, but would still be required as part of the special permit.
Seven and eight, we would use the landscape plan in, in the overall plan that shows the roadway and the, in the units location.
Okay, so I, I hear a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion and it's been seconded. We'll do a roll call vote. Bill LaPage? That's right, you, Mr. Clark has recused himself. Steve Watroba, I. And that's unanimous. Well, no, that's not, that, that's technically not a unanimous vote, correct?
No, I think it is.
Is it? Okay, alright. Okay, are we good?
Excellent, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Bill, I did have. I noticed when I was going through this, the zoning bylaw, there's a couple of sections in this open space bylaw. That I think even referring to what Guy was just talking about, you know, where they say. You can't have a new road, you can't use a frontage on an existing road for new lots. You have to do a new road in an open space plan. And it seems to be in conflict where a project like this one has existing frontage that is usable. But if you did this on a project where say you had fifty feet of frontage and no more frontage. And you have to bring a road in, then the definitive section makes sense. So maybe just some language, but I'd be happy to talk to you sometime if you want about. What, what I saw in here and if, if you would, would want to pursue it or not, but. Okay, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to jump back in here now if we're all set, we'll go to item number seven on the agenda. Referral of Water and Sewer Commission to comment on draft private water and sewer agreement. At seventy-one Mason Road, the planning board previously approved an A and R for the property. Cam Brigham will represent the development team. Mr. Brigham, Ms. Brigham, anybody there? Going to be with us this evening?
Well, I invited Mr. Brigham and his engineer, Norman Hill. They said they would attend, but I guess they're not here. There was a, I think maybe the reason is that the Water and Sewer Commission met recently. And they voted to require individual water and sewer service lines to each lot. Rather than showing them as common lines serving, you know, off, off three or four of the units. So that may be why they didn't show up, but. I know that there were still some other issues with the plan. And that is the, the driveway issue. So I asked Jeff Murray, the highway superintendent, to come in. And speak to what his issues would be when they actually apply for curb cut permits. And I might preface this as well by saying that we were asked by the Water and Sewer Commission to review this plan. When the, the common utilities were being proposed. And then it was only later when they decided to not allow those, those common water and sewer lines. But to require individual lines. So it kind of was very much a moving target in the lead up to this meeting. So. We're kind of, kind of caught in limbo here, but I think it would still be worthwhile to hear what Jeff has to say. In terms of the, the individual driveways. And if the board has any comments on. Those aspects of the plan as well, it'd be worthwhile to get back to the applicant so that they can. Take care of it before they actually apply for the permits.
Mr. Murray, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Alright, I guess the floor is yours for the moment.
So just, I, I did have a, a little bit of a conversation with Bill about this. Previously, and then looking at the, looking at their plan, there's a couple of items that jumped out at me. One. There's an existing house at seventy-one and it looks like. They're not showing a curb cut for the existing home. For one. There's a, currently a dirt driveway that's shown in there and it says that. They're going to do away or that they're going to eliminate that dirt driveway, but then it doesn't show any driveway servicing that. Existing lot.
So there's no, no driveway shown for house seventy-one, correct? And this is, this is the existing sort of a U-shaped driveway serving that goes to this house and that's going to be removed.
And then, so, and then the other thing too is, you know, they're showing. A common driveway servicing lot three and four. And then another single driveway servicing lot two. And it, you know, it appears though, I, you know, I don't know if the. You know, it may, may or may not be the case. It seems like, you know, quite possibly they're trying to skirt the, the regulation. It, it becomes a. A ZBA action if. If you're serving, servicing more than two lots with a common drive. So, you know, you just want to be sure that there is, there is an opportunity at another curb cut for the. For that existing lot. And there, you know, the intention wouldn't be to just put in the common, common driveway and then. Continue that driveway off of the existing one crossing. A second, a second driveway just by restoring that after the. After they receive their permitting or, or certificate of occupancy for any of those lots.
So Jeff, are you saying you think this might become a common driveway serving lot two in the existing house?
Well, I'm just, I, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to make any assumptions, but I, I think it, I think it would be nice to see. Where the intended curb cut would be for that existing house. Right now, they're really not, they're really not showing anything. And then the other, the one other issue too that I think. You know, I discussed with Bill was they, I think the Water and Sewer had asked for some sort of a. Not just a, not just an easement, but some sort of association or covenant or whatever with respect to the. Access with the public utilities. And likewise, I think because there's a common driveway there oftentimes, whether, you know, I don't know what the situation is now if they're. Related parties, family members or, or whatnot, but those things change. And, you know, even if that were the case currently. You know, there should be some provision in the, laid out so that in the future. You know, shared, shared expense or maintenance. Expense for that common driveway is kind of solidified with some sort of a. Some sort of a covenant or. Association or what have you to, to make sure that that's taken care of. And, you know, I have seen in the past where. Things like that happen and then, you know, ownership, maybe, maybe in an amicable agreement right now, but. Ownership changes in one, one or the other of the. The properties and then you get into a contentious situation and then it. Probably flies back in the face of the town. As far as getting more involved than they would care to be.
But you're saying that would be something that, that the sewer and water department would want?
No, so the sewer, sewer and water department are asking for some sort of a. Some sort of a, an association or covenant or whatever, what have you to, to address the issue of the. Public utilities. There's a water, you know, there's water and sewer shown coming onto the. Coming into the common driveway and then the utilities extending from there, so.
But now they're, but now they're requesting that it's going to be separate sewer and water lines for each lot. So doesn't that negate?
Yeah, it does. I think, I think they did.
Mr. Murray's concerned, I think, in terms of changes of ownership down the road. Is that, would that be consistent there? Mr. Murray?
Correct. So they're asking for sep- separate services, but it still looks like they're, they're. Technically extending, making an extension to the sewer. There's the, the plan that I'm looking at shows a. Shows a sewer manhole there and then services coming off of the, or laterals coming off of that line. So you still have the issue of. Essentially a private, a private main or private, private services in a common. In a common drive. So you really need to address those issues, I think. And, and, I mean, I don't want to.
I, I was, I was assuming that this plan was what they wanted to do and that, that now that this is going to be changed. But you're saying that, no, this is the.
No, Steve, I think, think you were right in the first case. I think this was the original plan that the Water and Sewer Commission did not want. I just haven't seen a new plan yet. So I'm not, I'm not positive, but I think that's the case.
I, I, if I may, I think I'll go back to Bill's earlier comment. This is something of a moving target. And I think the target has yet another ring in terms of this curb issue that's just been added to it. So. I don't know that there's anything here for us that's actionable this evening, Bill, is there?
Well, you know, when this came to me from the Water and Sewer Commission, I, you know, I said, well, you know, the planning board. Does not really have jurisdiction. There's nothing in the zoning bylaw that requires a site plan review or a special permit for this plan. But I thought it'd be worthwhile to help coordinate various departments' comments. And put it, you know, have one meeting where various departments could come and talk about the plan so that the applicant didn't have to go. Running around to different departments and get different, you know, requirements that would conflict with. Requirements of other departments. But then, as it turned out, you know, it kind of changed in the interim. So. I, I think it's useful for the board to look at this plan. And if you have any, any, you know, issues that you'd like Jeff to address. Because Jeff does have jurisdiction over the driveways. And he does have to issue driveway permits. And so if you have any concerns about. You know, the, the access to these houses, then I think now would be the time to, to let Jeff know and.
Yeah, well, we, I, I think we all agree, we need to see where the driveway is going to be on, for the, what is that lot? For house number seventy-one there, seventy-one Mason Road. I thought that the original A and R when this came before us, I thought that that was discussed where that driveway was going to go and. And, yeah, I mean, to his point, there's nothing there, nothing showing.
This common driveway concept. I, I have some reservations about that.
But it's legal, it doesn't matter, Rich. It's legal.
It may be legal, but it looks a little hinky on my end of it anyway. Maybe I'm not reading it as you are, but. Is this something, Mr. Murray, that you, in your experience, you see that's working well or working at all?
No, they, again, I mean, it falls within the guidelines of what's, what's allowable. As far as the bylaw. And it's not a ZBA action, it's, it's something that the. Something that the highway superintendent can obviously approve or deny. But, yeah, they, they tend to be problematic. So typically, you know. What I would like to see with something like that would be some sort of a covenant or, you know, you know. Or some other form of agreement with an association or whatever that ensures. Access to both lots or both properties with that.
None of which is the jurisdiction of the planning board, correct?
Correct.
Right, so you just, you're being asked to offer an opinion or comments like you would ask other boards to do for you.
Yeah, so, yeah, and I guess that's why it's in front of you to see if there, if there potentially is. In the planning board's opinion, some issue that does constitute their involvement, correct, Bill?
Now, where do we stand on this, Bill? We've already approved this, haven't we?
Well, you approved the A and R, the division of this property into four separate lots.
Which is not required.
Correct.
Right, so we've said nothing was required, we approved, it validated the fact that nothing was required. And now it looks like there are some reservations or concerns that weren't addressed. I'm not sure where this stands. Is this an A and R with a footnote next to it or is it something other than?
You may remember, Richard, when this came in, you know, I think you were concerned about this plan. And the creation of new driveways on Mason Road, which is kind of narrow and traffic. Tends to, you know, go pretty fast down this narrow road and there might be some safety concerns with, with the A and R plan. But that wasn't jurisdiction of an A and R process. So you really met the standards for endorsement by the planning board, so you did, but you weren't able to address. Some of the concerns that you had at the time. So in a way, this is, now it gives you a chance to revisit. Whatever comments or concerns you had at that time. And, and, you know, get them out on the table and make sure they're taking care of when the properties are developed.
But the reality is the lack of the curb cut for lot number seventy, for house number seventy-one. Is actually Mr. Murray's jurisdiction. So it's, it's really all he has to do is, is say that he requires it, correct?
Alright, so then we have to get that back to the applicant, to that wording to that effect. Is that a motion that needs to be made in this case?
No, because it's not our jurisdiction. It's Mr. Murray's jurisdiction as the highway department.
How is that conveyed back to the applicant? Is that Mr. Murray that's going to do that? Is that us? Is it Bill? Is it carrier pigeon? I mean, how is that conveyed?
Well, since they didn't show up tonight, I guess we'll leave it in Jeff's hands. I mean.
Well, quite honestly, without.
The building inspector can't issue a permit for a building. Well, actually, that house exists, that's right, that's the problem.
Yeah, and that's, so that's the, and I guess that's my point. What's problematic is part of this. So I, until I see a, an application for a driveway permit. You know, I, I can't really address the issue with the, with the property owner or the applicant. And address all of the issues with the, the common drive and the, and the curb cut for the existing lot.
Don't have representation from the, the applicant, so that's a silent voice at this point.
The only thing that I was going to say is that in the past, just, just from when I was on the board previously. So when I'm, I'm looking at this plan, I wasn't on the board when this was approved, but. You got, you got basically four lots and from what I can see in this plan, it looks like they're just proposing two, two common driveways. So I would think that lot one and lot two would be a common driveway and lot three and lot four would share a common driveway. And that is permissible in the zoning. But there is a new zoning, there was a new zoning bylaw added that stated. Now, I, I don't remember the exact wordage, but something to the effect that your access to your property has to be. On your frontage. So I don't know how that would work with a common driveway because if, if the frontage for, for the existing house, lot seventy-one. It's all on Mason, all these lots have frontage on, all lots have frontage on Mason Road. That's where they're getting their frontage from. But the new zoning bylaw, I thought that we implemented a few years back, said that you have to access your property from your own frontage. I don't know how that works with a common driveway.
I can tell you right now, that zone, that bylaw did not even come up in our conversation about this A and R, because I would have remembered that. And I also remember that the discussion that we had with the applicant at the time included the use of only one common driveway. That two lots were going to be served by this common driveway and that those other two lots were going to each have their own driveway. I recall that. Bill, do you recall that?
Yeah, I recall that.
And the other thing that we did in the past was. Off of Dave's Way, there is a common driveway that I believe serves two or three houses that have frontage on one ninety-seven. And that was, that was a little bit different. We had probably a little bit more authority at, on those houses because they were part of a subdivision. But they didn't want to have their driveways go out onto one ninety-seven because of people coming down the hill with a high rate of speed. And that they were afraid that people are going to be trying backing out of those driveways and cause accidents. So they have a driveway that's behind the house instead of in front of the house. And basically what we did on that common driveway was we made, basically the developer put a deed restriction in all. Three of those houses that share that common drive, that they will forever. Participate in maintaining that common drive in, you know, good condition and things like that. That was, that was put into each deed on each house.
But that was a subdivision, correct, Guy?
It was, it was a subdivision.
So with this being, with this being an A and R, I mean, the cat, the cat's out of the bag now, but I mean, if we. If we were, if this was an A and R in front of us for approval right now, could we do that in the future?
No, you can't put conditions on an A and R plan.
That's what I thought. So there's not really much we could do about this.
I think the only thing you could look at would be that, that bylaw that came in, like I said, this was probably like. Been off of wood, probably like four or five years ago, Nancy Runkel was the one that wrote the by. Uh, I've been off of wood, probably like four or five years ago. Uh, Nancy Runkel was the one that wrote the bylaw. Change. And I remember stating specifically that, um. If you were going to utilize a lot, you, you had to utilize your frontage on the lot to access your lot. Do you, have you remember reading this at all, Bill?
Um, no, I, I don't recall seeing it, but, you know, I believe you. So what I'll have to do is check with, uh, zoning enforcement officer to see how. He would interpret it in this kind of an instance.
Yeah, or, or just if, if I think I'll, I'll take a look, uh, tomorrow if I get a chance on the, uh, website. And see like at the back of the, at the back of the zoning bylaws, they list all the changes. So if we go back like three, three or four years, we probably can find it easier that way.
Sure.
I, again, Bill, I would ask, is there anything that's actionable at this time, or are we just gonna table this item with the?
It's up to you whether you have any other feedback for Jeff. If you don't, then you can.
Well, I, I think Mr. Wetroba has pretty much summed it up. This is an A and R, and as such, it looks like the cat's out of the bag, and it is what it is. All right, uh, no objections. I'm, uh, moving on to standard business.
Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate you coming.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Take care.
All right, standard business. We have our collection of, uh, existing items. And I think, Bill, that there's been some action on some of these, if you are here to. Identify what's happening on, uh, Pierpont, for example.
Sure, um. So I received a, um. And, uh, an ASB plan from Tony Secura for a portion of Pierpont states. Um, so they are going to, or he's asking to have, uh, the roads that are completed, accepted at a town meeting. It's over a mile of road in that subdivision. Um. I don't have the, you know, the actual, uh, delineation before me now, but it includes the small Colva Sax. And a portion of Noble Street, uh, which has been constructed. Uh, so, um, that initiates the action of, um. Um, you know, bring it forward. Uh, there's a, a number of, uh, actually, there's quite a few steps which need to be. Uh, accomplished before it, uh, it can be accepted. Uh, among them are, they have to, you know, comply with the town bylaw, which has a lot of submission requirements. Uh, goes to the selectman who then forwarded to the planning board for a public hearing, uh, the matter of accepting the streets. So you have jurisdiction in terms of, uh, since these are subdivisions, to make sure that the road to build according to standards. Uh, I'll be working with, uh, Jeff Walsh, um, as you, as you know, he's been. On top of this project from the very beginning, so he's well aware of, uh, the construction status. So he will be submitting a report to your board, to this board. Um, about whatever work needs to be completed before, you know, it should be accepted. Uh, so once that's done, then you can recommend to the selectmen that their way be accepted. Uh, this, uh, the selectman then send it to town council for legal review. There's a. Number of, you know, easements and, and, uh, right-of-way documents which need to be filed, so we want. Uh, that to be reviewed carefully. Uh, then it goes to town meeting for, uh, their vote to accept. And then after that, the town proceeds to actually acquire either the, the road and fee or the easement within the road. Uh, to make it actually become a public way. Uh, so this process actually will be taking place, uh, not only with, uh, Pierpont, but also with Tobin Farms. Uh, the applicant has also begun that process of getting Tobin Farms accepted, which is about another mile of roadway. And then it's possible that Piaster Road may come forward. The applicant contacted me last week saying that he wanted to. Uh, submit, uh, that road for acceptance as well. So you could be very busy in the next. Couple of months reviewing these, these subdivisions and trying to get all the work completed before they get to town meeting. Um, so I think it's the kind of thing that's been on your back burner for quite a while. These streets certainly have been lingering for a long time, so it'd be nice to actually get them accepted and approved and, um. And then you won't have to deal with them anymore. So, so I think it's a good step, and certainly benefits the property owners. Uh, who then will be living on a public way, and the town will be responsible for following and maintenance, et cetera.
If I may, Bill, is, uh, I believe you sent this to everyone, Bill, is KP Law. Public Way Layout and Acceptance Procedural Checklist. Uh, hopefully everybody's access to a copy of that, and I believe that might be something we'd wanna familiarize ourselves with, selves with before we, uh. Actually address any of these issues actively in a meeting. Is that provided to everyone, Bill? That document.
Do you want me to put it up?
From KP Law?
Do you want me to share it?
Well, uh, was it available to everyone? Was it on the, uh, something that you'd sent out or?
Yes, I did send it. Um. Let me see if I can, uh, pull it up. I know folks had difficulty getting into the, um.
Right.
Uh, their new email accounts, but I can pull it up.
I did get an email with a bunch of documents, but the, it was only, the only thing that was missing from it was the Zoom invite, but it had the agenda, it had the. Previous month's agenda for review.
There are always nephews with, with this Zoom stuff. I know, I, you know, it's just very difficult to get it to work properly. But I did try to, to get you these documents and, um, you may or may not have been able to get to it or not. I don't know, but. This, I thought, is a, would be a very useful reference tool for you to understand. Uh, and it's certainly helpful for me. And when I read it, so there were basically three steps. The first is the layout process. Which I just kind of summarized for you. Uh, the petition provides the selectman with a layout plan, uh, and then, uh, that plan. Uh, the board of selectmen votes. I'm assuming the, the, the plans refer to the planning board, which has forty-five days. To make a non-binding report to the selectman, you have all the public hearing. Uh, then once you make that, uh, that recommendation, your role in it comes to an end, and then it becomes. The selectman's job to make sure that all the, the legal requirements are met. Uh, second step is to go to town meeting for acceptance, and then the third step is acquisition. So I would recommend that you, you read this carefully, uh, because it sets forth all of the requirements, and they're very. Specific and detailed, and all of them have to be met, or else you have to, you know, stout over if you haven't, um, if you don't make it in time for town meeting.
There are time limits indicated in there as well, so.
Yep.
Another thing to be aware of. Uh, okay, thank you, Bill. That covers Pierpont, uh, Piaster Road and, uh. Tobin Farms. Anything else on those three, or was that, uh, the, the main event there?
Um, you know, on Country View Estates, um. Unfortunately, I, you, you know that, um. I mentioned several times the issue of the sewer pump station there, and the water and sewer superintendent was very concerned that. The pumps might fail while they're still privately owned, and unfortunately, that did happen. So it's worst-case scenario, what happened on Christmas Eve. Uh, so this department had to go out Christmas Eve night to, uh, put in a new pump to, to, you know, rectify the situation. And, uh, so I still haven't gotten satisfaction from the, from the developer yet that he'd be willing to share the cost of that. So we may actually go forward with, um, um, using the escrow monies that. You've already voted would be available for the project. We may actually work to, to take, take that money to, to help defray the cost of the, the pump station. So that was unfortunate, but. Um, it happened before we could actually get it fixed.
I think we all understood that that was inevitable, and, uh, again, as you said, the, the timing was unfortunate, but I don't think any of us. Should be too surprised at this point.
I thought the last time we discussed this, I thought that he had agreed.
I believe that, Bill, you indicated he had agreed to, uh, verbally to at least half of the cost. Is that a?
Yeah, that's correct. So we drafted an agreement, um.
That's what I thought.
We had the water sewer superintendent sign it, and I sent it to him, and. I follow up a couple of times, and I just haven't heard back from him, so I don't, I can't tell you. Anything more about what his position is on it, but he hasn't signed it yet.
Uh, very disheartening, right? All right, well, let's hope that the residents on Eisenhower Drive have, uh. Good luck going forward. Um, anything on Rocky Hill Estates?
Um, no.
Okay. And Lions Estates?
Uh, nothing since the last meeting when, uh, Tom Levine came, and I believe he was, uh, going to sort of stop working there during the winter time. His. His next, uh, step was to do the paving, the, the, uh, some, you know, the binder pavement. And, uh, I think he decided to wait for the spring now, so I don't think anything's going on there at the moment.
Inspections and actions associated with site plans?
Uh, no, nothing that I know of.
Okay, uh, the planners play.
Um. So we, you know, I submitted a, a grant application for the Economic Development Committee. For a local, uh, response planning program application. I'm still waiting to hear from, from them in terms of, um. Uh. I, I think everybody that applied will get funded. It's just a question of. What projects we put in for the state would, would deem worthy of funding. So I'm hoping to hear from that pretty soon. Uh, the ADA plan, uh, Michelle is scheduling a meeting with the selectman next Monday night. There'll be a, uh, discussion of the, of the, the final plan. It's currently in draft. Fa, you know, draft format. Uh, so the public is certainly welcome to attend that meeting virtually and offer comments on the plan. Uh, that sets forth the actions the town will take to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act in terms of both its policies and its. Improvements to physical facilities, including buildings and recreation sites. So that would be a big advantage for the town to, um, know where, where we're deficient in terms of. What needs to be done, and then we can start, you know, knocking them off one by one, uh, when funding and or other opportunities become available. The, uh, infrastructure plan for the, uh, Jericho and Brandon neighborhoods, uh, is moving forward. Uh, they are, Time Bomb, the engineer on the study is, is wrapping that plan up. They are preparing a list of, um. High priority, uh, projects, uh, that the town will be able to, uh, use. And reference when we apply for funding for, say, community development block grant monies or master grants or other grants that might be available. Uh, so they've done a really good job on that, and, uh, that will be very helpful going forward. So, um. Uh, the, the Green Communities Grants, um. I believe that the work is being done in terms of, uh, re-tropheting the town hall and. So a couple of the schools with energy conservation measures. Uh, I expect that will be wrapping up pretty soon as well. Oh, you heard about the Complete Streets program earlier this evening? Uh, so a lot of these planning activities are really moving forward. Uh, and, uh, you know, I, I think, uh, will be a real benefit to the town once they're completed.
Thank you, Bill. All right, comments from the board?
Um, I, I just wanted to. Say something real quick, just because getting back to what Guy was saying about that regulation that we talked about with the A and R. So can anybody think of any reason? Any, any instance where you could have a common driveway? And still, a- and not violate that regulation? I'm trying to wrap my head around it, because it almost sounds like if this regulation is. If, if this regulation exists, the way that, uh, Guy says it is, and I'm not doubting you, Guy. I'm just kind of wondering how the hell did we miss this? And if so, does it pretty much make common driveways a thing of the past in the town of Dudley?
It's, uh, common driveways are not, are not common in Dudley. And that's maybe how it got, how they, how the, uh, that bylaw change got put in, and nobody ever thought about a common driveway.
Yeah, because I'm just.
I think we need to somehow search that out and, uh, find out what the actual.
I'll try to take, I'll try to take a look tomorrow to find out when it was. I remember it was, it has to be like four or five years back. Um, it was like I said, it was a, it was a zoning change that Nancy brought forward, went to town meeting, it got approved. And I, I know the reason that we had it was because we had, uh, a situation where. There was a lot that was kind of like on a corner lot, and. Um, basically, this was like off, up off of Roberts Road and Cordis Road in West Dudley. And what happened was there was a gentleman that came forward and, uh, basically got fourteen A and R lots. On, I think it was Roberts Road or Cordis Road, I can't remember. And the last lot was on the corner, and we, he really didn't have access from one of the roads because of the wetland. And he was gonna, uh, utilize, um, the other side of the road for the. For the, the other side of the lot for the access point. And one of the situations with that was, um, you know, if the house faces one road and you have an address. And then you have the driveway on another road, when you've got emergency services going to that lot, they sometimes get confused and don't know where they are. So that was one of the situations that, that brought up this bylaw change. The other one was the fact that they were trying to act, they were trying to claim that they had access to the lot when they really didn't have access to the lot because of a wetland situation. Um, so they were trying to, yeah. I just remember that there was, there was multiple situations with this particular lot, and Nancy's solution was, let's, let's amend. Uh, our zoning to say that if you're gonna, um, u- utilize a, a lot, that you have to access your property. From, from your frontage, and that was supposedly gonna solve that situation, but I don't think anybody at the time ever thought about common driveways.
That was it.
Hey, Mr. LaPage, any comment? Bill, any comments? No, no.
No.
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Is there? Do you have something to add, Bill?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'd like to go back, if I may, to something that, uh, Mr. Horn mentioned earlier with regards to the Legacy Landing Project. And I, I think the term he might have used was, uh, was growing pains or something to that effect, that this was the.
Yep.
Something to the effect that this was the first of these, and, uh, by my count, there were twenty-one waivers that were granted. Uh, I think that might be indication that maybe we need to do something going forward in terms of. Anticipating at least another one of these at some point down the road. I, I find it hard to believe that Legacy Landing will be a one and, one and, one-off and one and done. Uh, I suspect that there may be more of similar projects some point down the road, and then from my understanding of it. Having to go through the process of granting twenty-one waivers is maybe, maybe not the most efficient or the best way to do that. Uh, Bill, I don't know what kind of guidance we need in regards to that, but I'm sure other communities have dealt with similar issues over time. Uh, condominium projects are not unique to Dudley, uh, certainly. Uh, so maybe there's something that we could do on that line. Um, the other thing is, uh, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission has identified that we have seventeen hours that are available to us. As of the communication I got from them recently. And, uh. Bill, again, I'm not sure, uh, if you have any thoughts in terms of how we might utilize any of those, but those apparently are on the books. Who are in our favor. Uh, the only other note that I would add is I, I wish Mr. Edmondson as well in the, uh, issue that he's dealing with. And, uh, having a meeting like this certainly appreciates his role a lot more than I had before the meeting began. Uh, comments from the audience? I guess we are the audience. All right, our next scheduled meeting is January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty. Everybody, uh, have that on their calendars already?
I'm just wondering, Mrs. Doherty, it must be really boring there if you're standing here watching us.
You know, I have to say, I, I've only been to a couple of meetings, um, in town. I find it fascinating.
Really?
Sooner or.
I wasn't bored, but that hurts a little bit.
I personally, I thought that your TV was out and, uh.
Yeah, we're not big TV watchers, obviously.
Oh, okay. Well, well, I think we're all flattered by that. Thank you very much. Uh, so again, the twenty-seventh of, uh, January. Approval of consultant vouchers. Payment of bills, Bill, what do we have before the house?
Uh, nothing else that I know of.
Oh, no bills. That's a good thing. Okay, uh, other town notices?
Nope.
And correspondence?
Nope.
No, okay. At this point, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Uh, motion made and seconded. Roll call, if you would. Mr. Wetroba?
Aye.
Mr. Horn?
Aye.
Mr. LaPage?
Aye.
And Mr. Clark? And Mr. Clark, aye, and that is unanimous, no doubt of that. Michelle, Bill, thank you very much for your help and assistance in keeping us live and the Dougherty's entertained. And look forward to Mr. Edmondson's return. Thank you very much and good evening all.
Thank you, everybody, good night here.
Good night.